Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming out to this November 14th meeting of the Planning Commission. If you would all please join me in the flag salute.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Hersog.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Haugie.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Thank you.
Report from the Planning Director. EJ.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Valdi, Planning Services Division. We just met recently, so just one update from the Board meeting. Last week, the Board took up the short-term vacation rental ordinance. They adopted that. It's going to be going back to the Board next Tuesday. I think that's the 19th for a second reading, and then that would become effective at the first of the year. And so that's the only thing I have to report from the Board meeting. As you know, we have, we're asking for two additional Planning Commission meetings for the next couple of months. So we plan to be here next week, which is the 21st, for you to consider the Sunset Area Plan, Plaster Ranch specific plan. Our administrative team is working feverishly even during this meeting to get that packet out today. So that will be available to the public as well at the end of the day. Then our next meeting will be December 5th. That will be a Tahoe meeting. I don't believe that's going to be a large agenda, but there'll be several items on there, so probably about a half a day. And then a December 12th meeting back here in Auburn, and that will hopefully be it for the year. Any questions on that?
EJ, is next Thursday's meeting, is it just one item on the agenda?
Yeah, Sunset Area Plan is the only item.
Thank you for doing that.
So that's all I have to report on meetings. I do want to introduce a couple Civic Spark fellows. Rebecca Pope, who I quickly introduced last time. I'm going to ask you to stand up just briefly. And Gianna Meskey. So Civic Sparks, that's a mayor corps program that partners fellows with local governments to work on sustainability-related issues. It's managed by the Local Government Commission in partnership with the Office of Planning and Research. So Rebecca, she'll be working with Shawna Purvines and the housing team on a myriad of housing-related initiatives and, you know, that the county is currently undertaking. Gianna, she'll be working with long-range planning and assisting DPW with the VMT SB 743 effort, which, as you know, has to be done by the middle of next year. Anyway, we're honored to have both of these working with us for the next 11 months, and we're looking forward to their contributions. So thank you. And that wraps up what I have to say, unless you have any questions, we can get going.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now, time for the, in the meeting for public comment, as would be comments on items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anybody? Seeing none, we will close that portion down and go on to the consent agenda. Is there any items any of the Commission would like removed from the consent agenda? None? Is there anybody from the public that would like an item removed?
Good morning, Sandy Harris, Granite Bay. I'd like to take the Premier Homes off the consent.
You got it. So we need to break this up. Mr. Hersog was not here last week, I think, so we need to, for the agenda for the 24th, take a separate vote on that?
I move approval of item A in our consent agenda.
A second?
Of a motion and a couple of seconds to choose from.
I will take the first from Mr. Nader and a second from Mr. Cannon and a vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Abstain.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then on to item B, the revised schedule.
I move approval of item B on our consent agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second from Commissioner Cannon.
First with Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Cannon, thank you, and a vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Abstain.
Mr. Nader?
Oh, I can vote on that one?
Yeah.
It's a yes.
Thank you. Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I further move that we approve item C on my consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Motion by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Haugie, and a vote from Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
I can vote on this one, right? Yeah, okay, yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
A point of procedure, we'll take item D now or at the end? What's the preference here?
Normally, the process is you would take item D now.
Okay. Chris knows that.
Chris Schmidt, the Planning Services Division. Standing before you today is a request by Auburn Douglas Duetz LLC for a two-year extension of time for a townhouse project in the Granite Bay area. Project site is located on the north side of Douglas Boulevard, east of Auburn Folsom Zoning in this area is mostly commercial to the west and to the south, residential single-family to the east, and also residential single-family to the north. Few site photos, there's a current boat repair and rental business on the property. Otherwise, it's predominantly grassland and oak woodlands. The project was approved back in 2007. Fifty-two duplex townhome units, that's allowed in the commercial zoning district. Total project size is 8.2 acres. So approved back in October 2007 with automatic state extensions. Exploration was pushed out to October 23rd, 2017. Your Commission approved a two-year extension back in August of 2017. Since that time, the original developer applicant repurchased the site after selling it right at the economic downturn in 2008. So they repurchased the site this past summer. So they're asking for a two-year extension to push the expiration date to October 23rd, 2019. They applied for this two-year extension October 11th. So the new October, or the new expiration date would be October 23rd, 2021. Staff has met with the applicant at least on two occasions to talk about process of updating their design and getting improvement plans in. So they have been working since the summer, seem intent on pursuing the project at this time. So with that, staff recommends approval of the two-year extension time request in reliance on the previously adopted mitigated and negative declaration and conditions of approval as modified subject to the findings found in the staff report. And be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Would the applicant like to?
I'm Jason McKissick, VP of Operations for Premier Homes. So the project is one that we had before the downturn, we were looking at, and now it's come back around. We're still interested in the project. Our plan is to stay with the design of the project as is and move forward if everything's good. Any questions for me? I'd be happy to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy?
This is, this is a good project. I like the fact that they're going to have smaller units, but I'm not sure what they look like because when it was originally presented, we never saw a design of the building. And the lots to the north of that, I know at the time when it went through the process before, those are larger lots, some of them over an acre, and they were worried about having two stories along their border there, and I'm not sure what that was resolved to. And also, how will the frontage along Douglas? Because in some of the existing developed neighborhoods, they have asphalt trails and not curved gutter and sidewalk. And once you get past that first part of Vesta de Lago, it's pretty rural all the way out to the lake. And so that treatment should be similar to what's there now. And I'm not sure on the east side, too, the lots along there look like they're pretty close. They have five-foot rear setbacks from the property line. That's pretty close to the line. So anyway, the project itself is good. Like to see some more of the single-story, the 1,200-plus square feet. That's perfect because this is a great area. It's very close to shopping, post office, library. There's just a lot right there, and I can see a lot of seniors wanting to live in there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Commissioners?
It'd be interesting to hear from the applicant or the staff, the questions that were asked and, you know, the response.
So staff does agree that it's a great location for a multifamily, smaller unit development. As far as the frontage improvements go, they will be doing a eight-foot-wide Class 1 sidewalk trail. So you can see that meandering in the green area along Douglas Boulevard. When originally approved, the design of the buildings were shown as Spanish architecture. The applicant has stated that they are reconsidering the design of that. It is a design seen a quarter, so we will be looking at what they do propose when they do submit for their improvement plans. But I don't think that's locked in at this point, and maybe the applicant can speak to that. When we did meet with them once, they did talk about possibly updating the proposed design to be more of what today's buyers are looking for. As far as the border to the north, it will be fenced. There's no restriction on the unit types if it's one or two-story along the northern boundary, but something we would look at or work with the applicant to make sure that some of those are one-story, if they do have a one-story option as previously proposed. Other than that, the applicant's not proposing any changes to the layout, but we will be looking at fencing types, fence locations, and the unit designs as it comes in.
Chris, what about setbacks? You had a question on the setback.
There are development standards for setbacks. I don't think they're very significant, to be honest.
I think she referenced the east side.
It looks like the yard, there's a little common area, maybe five-foot wide, and then on the lots itself, I'll have to pull that up. Sides are five feet, rear is five feet. So the individual parcels or lots are kind of small, what the units fit on. So they would be privately owned and maintained, the lots. But the layout is shown, the footprints of the building may change. I think those were just put on there to demonstrate how a unit would fit on a lot, but we'll be looking at that when they come in with final designs.
Well, Chris, will the public have any chance to review what the ultimate sort of design plan is?
I don't have a mailing list for this project, but I'm sure we could put it on the public on the website. I mean, design review could be appealed, but it'll be a design review agreement we'll enter into with the applicant, and we can certainly share that with Sandy.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Would the applicant like to?
Just to clarify, we do have single-story plans as well as two-story in the mix. We are looking at, you know, of course, updating it for the current buyer's, you know, likings, but obviously, we'd work with the county and whoever we need to to make sure it's something that's pleasing to the neighborhood, you know? For us as a builder, it's very important that we fit the area that we're building as well as, you know, something that's just pleasing to the eye for everybody, so.
Just a question. What price range are you looking at selling these units?
You know, I don't know that I have that information yet. We're still doing some market research on the area and just trying to figure out, you know, where we want to be. We do provide a higher level of spec in most of our homes, so they'll definitely be nice, appointed very nicely, so. But I don't have that information with me today.
I'd like to commend you on this project. I agree with Sandy. This is really needed in the area, and it's a great location because of the shopping and other things that are in that location. I, really is needed. I hope something that you can break ground before too long on this, because there's a demand for that right now.
Yeah, we're really hoping to do that very soon here, so yeah. We're avidly going after this. This is a beautiful project, and our main office is right down the road, so it's going to be quite a pet project for us as well, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the two-year extension time request for the Premier Granite Bay Townhouses in reliance on the previously adopted mitigation, negative declaration, and condition of approval subject to the law findings.
Have a motion and a second? Roll call, please, Sue.
That motion was from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon, so a vote from Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Laney, Cavett Ranch Estates. Can that go up a little? Oh, you're putting them up higher? Can those go up on that ledge? We can't see them from here.
No, you can.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. All right, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Delaney Farnum with Planning Services Division. Today, we have a subdivision map modification for Lot 2 of the Cavett Ranch Estates subdivision. The project is located at 4424 Polo Ranch Place, approximately 1.3 miles northeast of the intersection of Sierra College Boulevard and Douglas Boulevard in the Granite Bay The parcel is own residential agriculture combining minimum build site of 4.6 acres. Condition 71D of the Cavett Ranch Estates subdivision identified 15 lots where no concrete slab foundations were permitted except for garages and basements. In 2005, this condition was modified to allow the review and approval of concrete slab foundations by the Development Review Committee. Currently, of the 15 lots restricted by condition 71D, 12 of the lots have been approved for slab foundations, and the remaining three lots are undeveloped. Lot 2 is one of the remaining lots that we're seeing here today. The Development Notebook prepared for the subdivision identified the site topography, locations of trees, seasonal wetlands, conservation easement, and improvement areas. This lot was restricted by condition 71D due to the sensitive habitat located on the six-acre site. Miners Ravine, along with seasonal wetlands, run along the southern property boundary here. We have seasonal wetlands and miners ravine. This area is ultimately protected by a conservation easement, which is delineated by posting cable fencing on the site. So some of the permit history, this began back in July of 2010. A grading permit was issued for grading of the building pad area, followed by a building permit for a single-family dwelling in January of 2011. However, in February of 2011, the building permit was revoked due to inaccurate plans. The aerial image here is showing the site as of April 2010, prior to any site disturbance. In May of 2011, a stop-work notice was issued for grading activity that was not in compliance with the approved plans. In June of 2011, a violation of the stop-work notice occurred due to importation of approximately 400 cubic yards of fill and dirt. This image here is from July of 2011. We can see the importation of fill that was brought to the site after the stop-work notice was issued. Going into December of 2018, we have new ownership of the lot, and the current owner had pulled a demo permit to remove the slab foundation, followed by a grading permit that would allow the slab foundation to be removed as well as lowering the pad elevation. In January of 2019, the foundation to modify the pad elevation did not rectify all the violations on the site. So in June of 2019, the grading permit was ultimately revoked, followed by revised plans being submitted in August of 2019, where it was discovered that the subdivision modification would be required to allow slab foundation. In October 2019, this submitted the subdivision modification to request a slab foundation on the lot at a new lower pad elevation. This image is from August 2018, showing the site prior to the demolition of the slab foundation. Current conditions on the site, this photo on the left here is taken from the western property line facing east. We see on the far east side, the proposed pad elevation for the garage will be 270 feet. This is five feet lower than the originally constructed pad. We also see on the western closer side here for the house pad, we're looking at 272 and a half feet, which is three feet lower than the original pad. The image on the right is a close-up showing how much pad elevation has been removed. So we see original pad height here of 275.4 feet, and about three to five feet of pad has been removed to lower the total site elevation. Other items on the site is stockpiles and temporary construction access roads, which will be removed. Some further photos here. On the left, we see the neighboring lots. This is taken facing the northwest across the road to neighboring Lot 5. This photo is taking facing northeast to neighboring Lot 3. The proposed changes are to request a slab foundation at a lower pad elevation of three to five feet from the originally constructed pad. The new proposal also pushes the building site back by approximately 42 feet. So with the new location of the pad and the house, the original elevation of the project was seven feet above pavement. Now we're looking at four feet above pavement of the Polo Ranch Place and 42 feet farther back. The proposed house is a 9,300 square feet, 36-foot-tall home. This would be meeting our maximum height requirement within this zone district. This home will be visible from neighboring lots 1, 3, 4, and 5. However, the, this home is consistent with the surrounding lots in terms of size and Staff recommends Planning Commission find this project categorically exempt and approve the subdivision modification to allow slab foundation on Lot 2 of the Cavett Ranch Estates subdivision. I'm available for any questions.
Wait.
Delaney, this is a little frustrating. This is not the first time we've been dealing with the flagrant, I would say, ignoring the county on what they wanted to do on their property. And I just, I don't understand what's going on in there.
Yes, this has sort of a history within the subdivision of lots being non-compliant. What we're dealing with here on this specific lot is a new ownership of the lot, and they kind of inherited these historical violations, and what they're coming in here today is a proposal which lowered the pad, moved the structure back off the road. So staff found that to be more consistent with the modification to allow that.
Just a question. They took ownership of it in December of 18, correct?
They may have taken ownership prior to that. That's when they submitted the building permit to demo the slab.
Because it appears that there were still some issues that were going on afterwards, too, right?
Yes, some of the violations hadn't been completely rectified, and on our end, we did issue some grading permits inadvertently before those violations were dealt with.
How do we become aware, or I should say, the county become aware of violations? Is it somebody, a neighbor, is saying there's something going on here and it doesn't seem right, or are staff finding?
Yeah, a mix of both. We've had code enforcement complaints in the past. Also, when we get plans in that are approved, you know, in the office and we have an inspector go out and there's some inaccuracies, that's sort of when we discover some of these things. But with new practices, we are having a more thorough review of things like grading plans to hopefully prevent these items from happening before things get issued.
Because there was dirt brought in that was not approved to do that. You said 400?
Yes.
And I assume that's still on-site?
No, most of that.
They removed it?
Yes.
They did remove it.
I'll go back to the photo here. So June of 2011, we see where all that dirt was brought in.
Right.
It was since removed.
Oh, okay.
So the site is, it's been cleaned up. We do have some existing stockpiles on-site, but not to that degree, and those stockpiles are conditioned to be removed.
All right. Thank you.
Delaney, the, when the, when the original or the inadvertent permit was issued, the issues that weren't corrected through that were the placement of the structure on the lot and the elevation. Were those the two big deals?
Yeah, and then the discovery that we have this lot restricted by that condition that says no concrete slab foundation. So when planning got their review, it was determined we need to modify subdivision modification to allow their proposed, you know, house and project.
So realistically, plain and simple, that is all they're asking for today. The placement and all those issues have been dealt with. Everything else has been dealt with to the satisfaction of staff. The only thing we're, we're dealing with is, is a concrete slab versus a raised foundation.
Correct. And at this point, we're also requesting that your, we have the pad elevation has been reduced. It's definitely not being built to grade, so we do have some pad being built up, and so that's what we're also bringing forward, is the concrete slab foundation in conjunction with the built-up pad.
Okay, thank you.
Question on the original condition that concrete pads weren't allowed. Was that the intent of the condition, that basically no grading would occur on the site and therefore leave it in its natural condition?
Yeah, so my understanding was going back, reading our environmental documents on the original subdivision, was that these lots were intended to be restricted based on any sensitive habitat, whether that be wetlands, miners ravine, oak woodland habitat. So the idea was to have limited grading on these sites.
Okay. And it appears the grading that has occurred, which is pretty extensive, did stay within, outside of the conservation area?
Correct, so we-
But it didn't meet the intent of the approvals, which is, I'd say probably, a majority of that lot would never be graded under the original approval.
Correct, and I, and staff recommending approvals saw that the wetland conservation easement area has not been disturbed, and we've seen that with the posting cable fencing still in place, that that area has not seen effects from the grading.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Delaney, thank you.
Thanks.
Would the applicant like to come up and address the commission? Apparently not any members of the public. Jane?
Jane Nagri, Granite Bay. I just have one question about the elevation now and flooding, and they've taken it down- And they've taken it down, I think, five feet from what it was supposed to be. So I'd just like that addressed.
Okay, we'll see if we can't do that for you. Thank you.
I'll refer.
Thank you. Michelle Lewis with ESD. The home pad is outside of the floodplain, so the fill does not affect drainage to any of the neighbors. Lowering, that was one of the reasons they used for not lowering the pad lower than they have, is that that could affect flooding of their own property just from drainage accumulating if the driveway was lower. But I don't believe that, because it's out of the floodplain, the current fill that they've put in there is not going to affect the neighboring properties or the floodplain that runs behind the back of them.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, bring it back to the commission.
I'll just agree with the comments boiled down by the chair. Really, what we're looking at is, is that better? What we're, I'll agree with the comments of the chair, what we're really looking at here, we shouldn't be holding this property owner to the past ills and inconsistencies and inabilities to comply with the county rules and regulations. Therefore, this is a straightforward project, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not motions?
I'll make that motion.
You can also refer to the screen, too.
Thank you. I'll make the motion for a recommendation that... Requesting approval to modify the approved Cavett Ranch Estate subdivision number 385, condition 71D, to allow the concrete slab foundation on Lot 2 for the development of a plus-minus 10,000 square foot new single-family dwelling, consistent with the, with the conditions of approval that are outlined in the staff report, 1 through 4.
I guess we can take these in reverse order?
I want to make the finding that's categorically exempt from sequifers.
Okay, so we do need, I'm sorry, if we could do that on your, on your screen?
Right. So I'll switch that then, back to the, make the recommendation, we'll hold my first one. Make the recommendation to find the project categorically exempt from the environmental review pursuant to provisions of Section 15303A of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and Section 1836050A of the Placer County Environmental Review ordinance. Condition 2, approve the subdivision modification, which is the PLN 19-00314 of subdivision number 385, condition number 71D, to allow for a slab foundation for new single-family residents on Lot 2.
And that second portion, I believe, staff recommendation would be that that would be subject to the findings and modified conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Subject to the findings and modifications as identified in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second? Roll call, please, Sue.
Are we taking both of these motions as one?
Yes, that was the motion.
Okay.
We're just dealing with one.
No, the motion was for both items.
For both, we can do both at the same time.
Yeah, it's taken.
So that's yes?
That's for both.
One, one motion. Okay, so I have a motion from Mr. Cannon and a motion, and a second by Mr. Hersog. So vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Was this a recommendation, or is this an appealable item?
It's an appealable item, but being that no one has showed up?
Well-
Or spoke against it?
No, no obligation to read the appeal notice, then?
Just to be safe, I think you should.
Anybody wishing to appeal this item, they do so within 10 calendar days by paying a fee of $619 and filing the paperwork with the county. On to item number 2, Placer Gold Industrial Park. Morning, Nick.
Good morning.
Happy birthday, Nick.
Thank you. You remembered. I'm a 49er this year, actually. It's a good year to be 49er. So good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Nick Trifaro with the Planning Services Division. The item I have before you today is the Placer Gold Industrial Park subdivision map and conditional use permit modification. The project site is located in the Placer Gold Industrial Park, which is an unincorporated Rockland area of West Placer County. Placer Gold Industrial Park is within the industrial core area of the Sunset Industrial Plan area and Zone Industrial Park combining design scenic corridor. Surrounding land uses include both undeveloped and developed industrial property located to the north and south. Industrial properties such as the former Formica plant are located to the east, as well as Industrial Avenue. Industrial, I'm sorry, undeveloped industrial property is also located to the west. Access to the property is from a perimeter loop road that connects to the northern terminus of Cincinnati Avenue, just north to west Sunset Boulevard. So just to give you background on Placer Gold Industrial Park, the tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit were approved back in 2016, created lots 1 through 9 for industrial use. These lots will range in size from 2.8 to 14 acres. Also created lots A and B for stormwater detention purposes. Included a dedication of easement for Placer Parkway. You could see that on the northeast corner of the project site here. And set a maximum, was conditioned to set a maximum total building space limit of 460,000 square feet. With that, project a mitigated negative declaration was also adopted. Since 2016, final maps and improvements have been completed for lots 2 through 4 and Lot A, all of which are located on the south end of the industrial park. So what is before you today is a request to modify the conditional use permit and subdivision map. With this request, two additional industrial lots, lots 10 and 11, are proposed, as well as Lot C, which will be stormwater basin. You can see those are circled over on the west-hand portion of the property. They're circled in red. There's also two additional uses proposed, mini storage facilities and vehicle storage, both of which are consistent with existing Sunset Industrial Area plan.
Nick, will those allowed uses be for the whole industrial park, or just the newly created lots?
It would be for the whole industrial park, yes. Also, the two additional lots are proposed. With that, the 460,000 square foot limit will still be in place. So staff prepared an addendum to the dot of mitigated declaration. No new significant impacts, however, there is a new mitigation measure and modified condition adding for protective fencing for the wetland areas. So here are photos shown of you facing north from the southern portion of the property, also from the southwest corner of the property. And this is along the eastern property line. This is the existing perimeter road, so a view looking northeast and southeast. So this would provide, this area would provide direct access to lots 10 and 11. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Nick, if you don't mind, could you speak a little bit to the future connections to the west? And any funding issues, as it may relate to the Placer Parkway, and also to the continuation? I realize that Sunset is some distance from Foothills, but the Foothills extension is intended at some point to be made to go all the way through.
Right.
And how it would impact this project?
So there is a condition for a dedication of easement for a west extension over to the future Placer Ranch area. That's in place, and if there's any further development, they'll need physical improvements to go in place for that. And we feel France Engineering Surveying could also speak to those issues as well.
So is your question more regionally, or just specific to this project and the connection to the west?
It's both.
Okay, so the, just to speak to this project, there is a requirement for the project to provide an easement dedication to the west that will align with a road that's in the Placer Ranch project to make a future connection. That is conditioned in this project. Regionally, I may have to defer to Phil Vashin. Do you have any input from Public Works on, like, the regional traffic? Is there anything you can speak to, or not?
Phil Vashin with Public Works. I think regionally, talking about Parkway, I think that's, you know, the first phase of Parkway is slated to go into effect probably in the next three to four years. So that's what information I have about that.
Is there, I can't remember, on Placer Parkway, is there a, is there a, I don't know what's going on with my phone, sorry. Is there an interchange at Foothill on Placer Parkway? I can't, I know there's a interchange somewhere in that area.
I don't remember. I'd have to dig that up for you.
Because I would think it would be somewhere pretty close to this project, if I remember.
Correct. Yeah, I'm not sure where it is, though. I'd have to refer to one of the other engineers in our office and get back to you.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Nader. That's really where I was going with this. And I think that those that are here present and those that are watching and will subsequently watch online are going to want to make sure that those funding mechanisms are indeed in place for all of those future improvements. And we'd like to know specifically what those interchange requirements are. I mean, ultimately, the goal is to connect the city and the county from having to, for a myriad of different reasons, and traffic congestion, Highway 65, industrial impacts Lincoln, Rockland, and Roseville. So those are, those are where I was coming from with that question. I was not trying to put you or any of your colleagues on the spot.
That is, I want to just kind of follow on Sam. That is a really important one, because if we can get Foothill completed to that interchange, it takes a lot of pressure on Highway 65. It's an alternative route. And if I remember correctly, I think that the first phase of 65, which he referenced, that's going to be done in the next, I guess, two or three years or so, is supposed to end at that interchange for now, if I remember correctly.
And I would just add, next week, you know, you're going to have a pretty fluid discussion on the Sunset Area Plan, and you'll be able to hear about the entire plan for the road networks out there and infrastructure and all that, how that's going to be obtained on this particular project. I mean, this is a easement request, and, you know, this isn't a main thoroughfare in the large planning scale of things out in the Sunset area.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that's great, EJ, and thank you for that, for myself and for my colleagues in the commission. But we, or at least I would, and I'm pretty sure Commissioner Nader will agree, we'd like to have those answers at the next meeting, that the impacts and everything else that you can explain to us on, on funding sources, so that we can better, better address the Placer Ranch, because that is a very sizable project, and this is a key component of that project. Be able to make the industrial portion of that, of that West Placer area viable and more easily accessible, and also within the larger residential and industrial that will comprise Placer Ranch and Sunset. That makes some sense.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We'll be well-prepared to take that on. Going back to the Foothill connection with Placer Parkway, that for first phase, from what I know, is not going to be an interchange, although it's only going to be a T-intersection, right, for Phase 1. So as it punches through, we can get that for you and that information, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick, one more quick question for you. Does this industrial park, is it served by a railroad spur?
Yeah, there is actually a rail spur.
And that's being preserved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
It's just on the south, see here on the southwest portion of the property.
Just being preserved?
Right, right.
There's only so many of those. I hate to see them go away. All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to?
This is Chairman, members of Commission, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard, on behalf of the owner-builder of the Placer Gold Industrial Park. Staff report pretty much sets forth a pretty simple, straightforward request to you. These lots, 10 and 11, and the drainage basin lot, are free of wetlands. So the idea is, as my client continues to look and bring users to the site to try to bring in more developable land into the project, some folks have looked at the western half and wish to go there rather than the eastern portion. And so when you find lots that are actually free of wetlands, the idea was to bring them in to be able to move forward with development. Again, the former Formica building, which when it first, my client first bought it, had been completely stripped. It was several millions of dollars just to get to the point where it was leasable. It is now fully leased. My client has about $23 million plus into this project to get those first four lots finalized and roadways built and the, all the infrastructure ready to go. They have building plans approved on one of the lots, and users coming in on a couple others. So the idea is to try to keep this project moving forward. I would note that if you look at that northwest corner, that out of this project, this project lost 12 acres to Placer Parkway, and that was a dedication. And also, in terms of any connections, anything further on the west side of the project, we'll have to do a traffic analysis, because that may determine, as one of your conditions notes, that there is no need for that east-west connection, simply because there won't be a traffic need to do so at that time. But whatever user comes in is going to have to look at that. But we'll be paying fees in our Sparta Tier 1 fees and all the traffic fees for the Sunset Area Plan as that comes forward. So this project will be contributing to all the roadway improvements in the area, including the Sparta fees for work on Highway 65. Would that be happy to answer any questions?
Well, I think that you've adequately answered, and thank you for touching on those, Marcus. I wasn't, my intent was never to pin the applicant for any of this. I'm well aware that, that you have made a significant, your client has made a significant sacrifice of the acreage and also, and is intending fully to comply with all of the different funding structures. So that was where I was going with that. I was really going with a, with a larger, long, you know, 10-year plan, 15-year plan, and how this is going to fit within Placer Ranch and Sunset and further development on the residential side and the traffic. But you're right, exactly as you stated, it will be dependent upon the traffic mitigation studies that will be done later on.
Yeah, we didn't take your comments to reflect on, in terms of what this project had to do. Again, we have a full set of conditions, and moving forward as the project continues to move forward and bring users to the site, and there are a whole number of users that are already in, a primary wager in our jobs that have already been brought to the site.
And just to say, not only the sacrifices that you've made, but your client has made, but also those other key components, which are those jobs and everything else that's positive that will come from this project. I think it's a good project, so thank you for clarifying-
You bet.
-the few questions that I had, that were really directed at your client and more direct, less directed at your client and more directed at the county for, for long-term planning.
Sure, you bet. Again, the rail spur is a critical part of this, so we definitely keep that rail spur.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone from the public? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission.
Go ahead. Now, do we take these one at a time, as Sam?
For this one, I think that's the safer move, is to take them one at a time. And I would also like to note the recommendation for the second item. I think staff's recommendation would be that that would also be subject to the revised conditions of approval for the map, so just when you get to that one.
Yeah, right. Okay, I'd like to move that we approve, adopt the amended, to the mitigation negative declaration for the Placer Gold Industrial Park project, subject to the findings of the staff report.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Sue.
I have a first by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon, please.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would further move that we approve the modification of the Placer Gold Industrial Park and dusting tentative subdivision map, subject to the findings of the staff report. And again, Clayton, could you?
Sorry. And subject to the revised conditions of approval.
So move that.
Second.
Motion, the second?
I have a motion from Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will further move, approve the condition use permit modification of Placer Gold Industrial Park Project, PLN 19-00109, subject to the revised conditions of approval and findings in the staff report.
Second.
Roll call, please, Sue.
Another first from Mr. Nader, a second from Mr. Cannon, so a vote for Mr. Cannon.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep. All right, thank you. We've got one more here, I think, have we not?
Yes.
Okay, so how about we take five minutes and then come back and start with our last item? [inaudible] We've got one more here, I think, have we not? Okay, so how about we take five minutes and then come back and start with our last item? All right, if we are ready, we will reconvene and...
Can I do anything? Oh, I did, there we go. You said to touch it. Again, Shawna Purvins with Planning Services, and thank you for having me here today. We're going to talk a little bit about some of those recent changes that have happened at the state. I will give you one small caveat. We, and I say "we" as in 600-plus jurisdictions in the state of California, are still trying to figure out some of these that have, new laws that have come down through the state. It is, was no easy task to even pull this presentation together in such a quick order. These laws were only signed into law essentially less than about three, four weeks ago. So, one, I know you had the opportunity to meet our new fellow from Civic Sparks, Rebecca Pope. She was instrumental in pulling this information together for us so that we could start these So by way of a little bit of background, we saw a substantial amount of new housing that, new housing laws that were introduced with Governor Brown in 2017. They talk about the package of 14. It was really around 22 at that time. And we thought at that point, you know, how much more could you do with housing, right? Well, in 2019, they actually put in, in April, over 200 new housing laws were proposed in April of this year. So there's a little picture of all of those 200 laws that were out there. By the, by October, sorry, I'll stop. By October, there were 40, about 43 laws that were actually signed into law by the governor. That leaves about 160 or so left sitting out there. Not really, I'll talk a little bit more about how some of them definitely got kind of bucketed together, and so we only anticipate a handful more probably coming up in this next year. So one that actually you probably heard a lot about under, that made the news was the tenant protection bills. So these included things like caps on rent increases or certain notices for 90-day. Much of this actually won't affect Placer specifically. A lot of this affected those jurisdictions that had specific tenant or rent protection ordinances in place. That being said, we do receive a number of those phone calls, and we'll need to respond appropriately and work with the state to ensure that, you know, the new laws are also applied throughout our rentals and throughout the county.
I've got a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Let's go. The first one, we have a 10% max in annual rent increases, but then if we're going to increase it over 10%, we have to give 90 days' notice?
Mm-hmm.
Which one of those counts?
The 10%, as I understand it. So this is definitely one of those that are still being vetted out, both in the tenant protection and the next section where we're going to talk about accessory dwellings or secondary dwellings. There were so many bills that came in, the bills actually in some ways crossed each other. So there's going to be a handful of cleanup coming in January by the legislature to, you know, give us more specificity on how to deliver these projects.
I'm sure they'll fix it real good for you.
I'm sure they will.
Shawna, I just wanted to ask on that, you said it's not going to, that one is not going to impact Placer that much?
Staff at Placer County, because we don't have an adopted ordinance that regulates the rents. It still affects rental projects in Placer County. They just work directly with the state to meet the state obligations.
So if I have a rental house and I want to raise the rent?
You will have to do it under state law.
Am I limited?
You would have to follow state law, correct.
Oh, that's nice.
Shawna, could you just kind of mention where things have not been resolved as you go through your presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So accessory dwelling units, this is definitely one where they, I think there was 12 different laws that went through, nine that were approved, and this probably had some of the greatest impact on housing as we're going forward. So before you, the list of some of the things that will be changing as far as accessory dwelling units, the county does have an ordinance, and come January 1st, as with all other jurisdictions in the state, our ordinance will be found null and void, and we will be defaulting to the state until such time as we adopt a new ordinance here in Placer County. That was actually a provision that was put in in 2017. We did update and adopt a revised accessory dwelling unit ordinance, or we call it a secondary dwelling ordinance, in the fall of 2017 to bring it consistent with the then state laws. We will be doing the same again. Our hope is to be back to you sometime probably late January, early February, and move that ordinance through. The accessory dwelling or secondary dwellings are actually statuteually exempt under, our ordinance updates are statuteually exempt under SEQUAS, so we're able to move a little bit quicker on those as we go forward. Effective January 1. Some provisions are effective today, and others, yeah, have protections until those rents, until those ordinance come in, until 2021, yes. Yeah. So, so some of the bigger changes, reduce time to review ADU applications, I think we had 60 or 90 days, we're now down to 60 days. Those have to be ministerial, that again was a law that was changed before. It does remove the replacement of parking requirements. So again, in 2017, there were some very stringent new parking rules that were brought that limited when parking could be required. So if you're within a half mile of, say, a transit stop, there's no parking, new parking requirements as part of adding a secondary dwelling. Probably the biggest change in this one is if you're replaced, if you're building the secondary dwelling, the ADU, it, within what was the parking spot, like a garage, then you don't have to replace that parking. So that, that's not a requirement any longer. So the biggest change, bullet number three, is what we're calling the triplex effect. What they did allow is that every single-family property is allowed a primary, a secondary, and a junior unit. So you now have basically three units allowed on any single-family lot.
So...
What's that?
We're a footage...
Yes, yeah. So the secondary dwelling is still limited at 1,200 if it's detached. It's 50% of the main or the primary if it's attached. So if the main home is 3,000 square feet, then your limit is 1,500 square feet. And although if it's in an existing structure, there is, based on HCD's interpretation of the law, there is no limit to the size of that.
So it doesn't matter what lot size we're talking about?
No, there is no minimum lot size. The junior unit is limited to 500 square feet, and it must be contained within the primary or the secondary unit. So it's usually, so you wouldn't see necessarily three buildings, but you would have the three units on the site.
So with the parking, two parking spaces may be required for three units?
So out of, so if you're not within that half mile of a transit stop or within other, some other special parking district, it is one parking stall per unit. So it doesn't matter the size of it, it's just one per unit.
So in Placer County, I don't think we would, there's no locations that would be close to one of those transit units, is there?
Yes, because that was one of the changes as well. It's any bus stop.
Any bus stop.
Any bus stop would include that transit stop.
So could you have three separate structures with the triplex definition?
Yes.
You could.
You could, although the junior unit must be contained within an existing structure, but, I mean, you could have a scenario, we have a primary, a secondary, and say a detached garage still, and the junior could be still located within that detached garage, but it does need to be located within an existing structure.
Current CCNRs and subdivisions still override this?
No.
No.
That's my next slide. We'll talk on that, yeah. So just real quickly, some of the other major changes, minimum, both rear and side setbacks are now only four feet, and...
Oh, that's nice.
Shawna, could you just kind of mention where things have not been resolved as you go through your presentation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So accessory dwelling units, this is definitely one where they, I think there was 12 different laws that went through, nine that were approved. And this probably had some of the greatest impact on housing as we're going forward. So before you, there's a list of some of the things that will be changing as far as accessory dwelling units. The county does have an ordinance, and come January 1st, as with all other jurisdictions in the state, our ordinance will be found null and void. And we will be defaulting to the state until such time as we adopt a new ordinance here in Placer County. That was actually a provision that was put in in 2017. We did update and adopt a revised accessory dwelling unit ordinance, or we call it a secondary dwelling ordinance, in the fall of 2017 to bring it consistent with the then-state laws. We will be doing the same again. Our hope is to be back to you sometime probably late January, early February, and move that ordinance through. The accessory dwelling or secondary dwellings are actually statutorily exempt under, our ordinance updates are statutorily exempt under SEQA, so we're able to move a little bit quicker on those as we go forward. Effective January 1. Some provisions are effective today, and others, yeah, have protections until those rents, until those ordinance come in, until 2021, yes. So some of the bigger changes, reduce time to review ADU applications. I think we had 90 days, we're now down to 60 days. Those have to be ministerial, that again was a law that was changed before. It does remove the replacement of parking requirements. So again, in 2017, there were some very stringent new parking rules that were brought that limited when parking could be required. So if you're within a half-mile of, say, a transit stop, there's no new parking requirements as part of adding a secondary dwelling. Probably the biggest change in this one is if you're building the secondary dwelling, the ADU, within what was the parking spot, like a garage, then you don't have to replace that parking. So that's not a requirement any longer. So the biggest change, bullet number three, is what we're calling the triplex effect. What they did allow is that every single-family property is allowed a primary, a secondary, and a junior unit. So you now have basically three units allowed on any single-family lot. What's that? Yes, yeah. So the secondary dwelling is still limited at 1,200 if it's detached. It's 50% of the main or the primary if it's attached. So if the main home is 3,000 square feet, then your limit is 1,500 square feet. And although if it's in an existing structure, there is, based on HCD's interpretation of the law, there is no limit to the size of that.
So it doesn't matter what lot size we're talking about?
No, there is no minimum lot size. The junior unit is limited to 500 square feet, and it must be contained within the primary or the secondary unit. So it's usually, so you wouldn't see necessarily three buildings, but you would have the three units on the site.
So with the parking, two parking spaces may be required for three units?
So if you're not within that half-mile of a transit stop or within some other special parking district, it is one parking stall per unit. So it doesn't matter the size of it, it's just one per unit.
So in Placer County, I don't think we would, there's no locations that would be close to one of those transit units, is there?
Yes, because that was one of the changes as well. It's any bus stop.
Any bus stop.
Any bus stop would include that transit stop.
So could you have three separate structures with the triplex definition?
Yes.
You could.
You could, although the junior unit must be contained within an existing structure, but I mean, you could have a scenario where you have a primary, a secondary, and say a detached garage still. And the junior could be still located within that detached garage, but it does need to be located within an existing structure.
Current CCNRs and subdivisions still override this?
No.
No.
That's my next slide. We'll talk on that, yeah. So just real quickly, some of the other major changes, minimum, both rear and side setbacks are now only four feet. And there is no minimum lot size, requires rental of ADUs for longer than 30 days. This is one of those cleanup items. This is where there was three separate bills that both used a shea, a shall, and a may. And at the end of it, nobody could quite figure out which one led, so they're gonna be coming in and cleaning that up. But they also decided to throw us a curveball with the ADU laws, and they did a five-year and everything after five years. So there's things that go into play right now, from 2020 through 2025. And then unless extended, we will have changes automatically go into effect in 2025 as related to the ADUs. So this will take some time to kind of unwind, but you know, our hope is to get a revised Placer County secondary dwelling ordinance to you as quickly as possible.
Is the 30 days gonna stick?
My understanding is it will stick, potentially will stick for new secondary dwellings that are approved, and it'll be in that first five-year, but we will see. It may just go to a shall, so.
May go to what?
I'm sorry, may go to a may, so may allow. So jurisdictions have the opportunity to restrict it, yeah.
They can do whatever they feel appropriate.
Right.
Thank you.
There are no setback rules for non-conforming structures, legal non-conforming structures. So if you say, you know, have a building that's right up on the property line and you want to convert that, if you want, I'm sorry, if you want to convert that unit into a secondary, you can do that. There's no requirements for you then to meet the setback rules, you can just do it in place. If you wanna tear down that unit and, you know, say the garage that was on the zero-lot line, and replace that, as long as it's kind of like-for-like, you can do that as well. With the exception is you can add about 150 square feet if you, you know, need a patio or overhang or that type of thing. Attached ADUs no longer are limited to that 1,200 square feet, as I mentioned. It's 50% of the primary if it's attached. Oops, wrong way. So AB 587, this one actually requires a local ordinance to be adopted. It's separate and apart from the regular accessory, but in some instances, nonprofits can build primaries and secondaries, and the secondary can be sold separately from the primary. But rules need to be put into place on how that would be and how they would do it. It has to be part of a nonprofit.
So there's no rules yet if that's like a subdivision that has to occur in order for that to happen?
Correct, yeah. That's still to come, should Placer County even want to entertain that. So that's not a requirement. AB 670, this is the one that prevents HOAs from barring ADUs any longer. So all HOAs now must also allow or secondary dwellings. AB 671 is the local government assistance. This is where housing elements must promote ADUs for affordable rent, and HCD is required to develop a list of state grants and financial incentives for ADUs. And then the next big change, and I think I'm done with ADUs for a little bit, are impact fees. So SB 13 requires that no impact fees can be levied on a project if the unit is 750 square feet or less. If it is larger than 750 square feet, it must be proportional to the size of the primary unit. So we'll definitely be looking at our fee ordinances and changing this.
When you say no fees, I mean...
No impact fees.
No impact fees.
Correct, so that's our traffic.
Traffic parks.
Traffic parks, capital facilities, yeah.
What about fire school, all those?
Fire, yeah, could have, fire schools outside of ours as well, because those are impact fees. But hookup fees still can apply. And then, you know, building permit fees, just, you know, reviewing the plans, those would still apply as well.
So going back to the ADUs, what about sewage and water for wells, for septic tanks? Can they go on without modifying those structures?
No, they still have to meet public health and safety requirements, yes. So streamlining and increasing density, there was, the state density bonus law was amended. Now there is what they're calling it the super-density bonus. So for projects that are 100% affordable, they can have an 80% increase in density. And 20% may be allowed for moderate-income individuals, so that increases those densities as well.
When you say affordable, what part of affordability are you talking about?
120% or below of, yeah, 120% or below of median income. Correct, for the county, yeah. The other change was that if you are again within a half-mile of a major transit stop, so this is not just any bus stop now, you have to be, it has to meet the definition of a major, which has certain headways, usually every 15 to 30 minutes during peak hours. There are no density limits, and 33-feet height increases are allowed. So pretty big changes.
When you say height increases over what's allowed today?
Over what's allowed today.
So if you're allowing 30 feet, you can now allow 63?
63 feet.
And no density limit whatsoever?
No density limits. So we'll talk a little bit about one of the bills that did not go through, which is SB 50, yeah. And so when SB 50 kind of got shelved until the second season, many of these other bills were modified to pick up some of the things out of the SB 50 bill. And the density discussions were one of those laws, so, yeah. Yeah, there was another, some amendments to the farmworker housing as well.
Does density also cover lot coverage? Or do the lot coverage standards still apply?
Lot coverage, is my understanding, lot coverage still apply? So this is definitely one of those we're gonna have to figure out.
So if you have a 30% lot coverage?
You're going.
You can go up.
Yeah, correct.
And they will.
Yeah.
I have a question on that, too.
Yeah.
On the density issues, so that's which bill, that AB?
1763.
Okay, and that's gonna have significant impacts on local jurisdictions because of the, what we're all talking about here, the height restrictions and limitations. I can speak to that, because I know that in the municipality where I served in the planning commission before this one, you know, we were dealing with that, grappling with that all the time. So the impacts, I mean, that's going to overrule those local jurisdictional requirements of state law.
Correct, correct, yeah. At this time, Placer County does not have, in the unincorporated area of Placer County, we do not have any major transit stops. We don't meet that definition. It's a matter of time before some of our systems, you know, get up there. At this point, that provision actually would not apply in Placer County.
Would not apply anymore to this stuff?
Ready?
Good question.
Well, I didn't hear.
It said SEQA exempt.
Is SEQA exempt?
Nope. No, you still have a SEQA review on the project. Not on this one.
Doesn't matter about the neighbors, but the frogs.
SB 330, this is definitely one of kind of the bucket bills. It's like just a bunch of stuff got thrown into this one. I'm gonna kind of go through it in a couple of slides. One of the last presentations I sat in on this, it was over 20 slides and took over an hour and a half to get through. That's how much is actually in this bill. So I'll kind of run through some of the highlights on it at this point, but it is definitely chock-full of things for the local jurisdictions to do. So the first is that it only, SB 330 and the rules that are in it only apply to urbanized areas. My very next slide is an actual slide of the urbanized areas, so I'll show you where those are here in Placer County. It limits the ability to regulate housing developments, and housing developments have been defined now as any residential development, mixed use with two-thirds square foot residential, and then any transitional or supportive housing. One of the trends we anticipate seeing in years to come is the change from kind of one unit equals density to talking more about square feet or the use of floor area as part of housing as opposed to the one-to-one, just because they're trying to encourage more of a mix of housing types. And right now, whether it's a 3,000-square-foot home or a 500-square-foot home, it just still equals one. And I think that there's some interest in looking at more of a floor area ratio or conversion to like we do with commercial or non-res. Also, downzoning prohibitions, so there is, the rule does not allow for a jurisdiction now to kind of run in and go back and do a quick rezone to downzone any areas. And there are no moratoriums except for immediate threats to public health and safety. So a local jurisdiction could not run a quick moratorium or an initiative at this point to stop, say, you know, density or changes as part of it. And then no reduction in densities are allowed. And this is a five, at this point, most of these provisions are for five years, 2025.
So on the downzoning, what if a community decided to move zoning around? It's still not allowed to downzone that existing lot, even if you move the density somewhere else?
I think we would need to, you would have to take a look at that, and it would be a determination by HCD that you're still acting. But the way it reads is that you're not allowed to downzone. There is other rezoning limitations that apply, plus the hearing limitations in this one. So no residential project can have more than five hearings. Hearings also include workshops or any continuations. So will definitely be a limitation on the number of hearings that we'll have. There's also shortened approval times. Normally, our SEQA goes at the same time as the project, but in some jurisdictions, the SEQA or the certification of the environmental document may go at a different time than the project. So for those jurisdictions, it's now only 90 days between the certification of the environmental document and the hearing on the project. If it is an actual affordable housing project and it has an application for tax credits, it's down to 60 days.
I assume hearings are something that's official, not MAC meeting, which are just informational?
That we are asking for an interpretation on that one, actually. Because it said any workshops or meetings is actually in the definition, and I'm kind of curious, but yeah. We're trying to, we're looking in that one, for sure.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt with a question, if you don't mind. So in interpretation, are we asking for a legal opinion from county council? Are we asking for a legal opinion from legislative council as far as the parameters of state law, impacts, and consequences? And the authors of these bills don't give a hoot about the unintended consequences. This is an effort, an effort to, I mean, this is outrageous usurpation of local powers, is what it is. And a MAC meeting would absolutely be one of those meetings, because it's a, in my interpretation, and for the 20 years working for the legislature, that churns out this ridiculous kind of legislation, but that's my own side.
I am working very closely with county council's office to identify a lot of those things that are unclear at this point, and will be asking the appropriate sources for those answers. So this is a map of the urbanized areas. So SB 330 actually only applies to the urbanized areas, as I stated. So anywhere where you kind of see the color, so in the blue here, that's an urbanized area. You know, the greater area around Auburn. This is what they call the Lake of the Pines urbanized area, but of course, it kind of comes all the way down into 80. There's a couple of little sections for Colfax and then up here by Kings Beach. So that's where these rules would apply. What's that?
Oh, I was just saying, you know, Kings Beach, you know, and Tahoe. Do they get any different protections because of that Tahoe Basin area? Or are they just susceptible to these laws equally as the other urban areas?
TRPA generally will find that they are not subject to state law. That being said, their housing committee is taking a look at the recent changes in state law and are updating their housing policies, because they recognize there is a housing shortage up there as well. And they're trying to, you know, figure out ways to increase housing to meet their needs, so. Yeah, generally, no, they would say, state laws don't apply.
Shawna, the red blob is Metavista in there between Colfax and Lake of the Pines?
It is, under the census, it is actually called Colfax still. Under census, it is, but yes, it's more Metavista.
It's that gray, that gray, the gray could be Metavista. It comes over from Lake of the Pines.
Right here, yeah.
I think that's Metavista.
You're right, you're right.
Yep.
Interesting.
So again, as part of SB 330, there is a requirement that each jurisdiction creates a preliminary application process. Again, Placer County already has a pre-application process, so it'll be just a matter of looking at our existing processes and then bringing it up to meet, you know, state requirements.
Shawna? Go ahead. Are we doing any projections of, are we starting to try to kind of anticipate what kind of participation we're gonna see in these programs?
No, not yet. We're still just trying to get our heads wrapped around the changes themselves in state law and what processes and procedures we're going to need to address, just to meet them.
I mean, certainly things like the ability to deliver water and sewer and those kind of things are going to limit who can participate in this regardless of what the law is, unless there's something that says you have to make, the county has to make the infrastructure available or something, then...
No, not yet.
Then physical restraints are gonna limit this to be, to me, quite a bit less impactful than you initially start thinking when you see all the restrictions going away?
Agreed.
Okay.
AB 101, this was another one of the bucket bills that I talk about. It was actually a trailer bill to the governor's budget or an omnibus bill. It probably had the most carrots and sticks involved, so it came with a substantial amount of funding and incentives, but it also came with a pretty heavy hand on if our housing elements and requirements don't meet state code. So in short, you know, it provided about $2.5 billion in funding, established incentives to encourage cities and counties to increase housing production, created more stringent enforcement, and then required local governments to provide by-rights, SEQA-exempt approvals to transitional housing, or housing-first principles, which falls under our supportive housing. I'm actually gonna come back to AB 101 as we come, get closer to the financing and those discussions. There was also a lot of work this last year around the Surplus Land Act and availability. All state agencies were required to go through and look at their lands throughout the state that they may be able to identify a surplus and provide those. I think Placer only, we only shook out a couple viable parcels, at that one, one being in Kings Beach, actually. And, but it also requires that the county do this. And then there's some changes into the rules of the Surplus Land Act that allows for those parcels to be released a little bit quicker. But there are still affordable housing requirements on those. Usually, they're in and around about the 25%. So if somebody wants to pick those up through the affordable housing provisions under this act, then 25% of the units that are constructed on there are required to be affordable. And then AB 1483, this one dealt mostly with the impact fees. And as of January 1st, 2020, it requires all local jurisdictions to post housing development information on their websites, make regular updates. And it also requires all of the fees to be posted. And not just the fees, but the last five years of annual reports on those fees and the nexus studies that achieve those fees if those nexus studies were done in 2018 or sooner, or recent. So a lot of information, we're gonna need to be making sure, a lot of it is already on our website, but you know, just kind of going through and making sure that we've been able to post everything. We'll need to get that all up there.
What's the point?
The idea is that, the point for a new project that's now coming in through the pre-application, the requirement for the pre-application is that they leave that preapplication with all the information necessary to go put an entitlement package together and then resubmit. Those resubmittals now need to be within 180 days. If they're not within 180 days, then they just need to come back through the pre-application process again. But the idea is they have all the information, and also that, so if fees are, once fees are disclosed, that those fees can't change or new fees can't be added, with some exceptions, like cost of index increases and those types, but yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't understand why the history is, you said five years.
Five years of the annual reports?
Previous, right.
The previous five years, of just how those fees have been utilized and the reporting. Normally, those are done as part of the budget processor updating reports.
They like screw impact fees, they gotta be spent.
A couple of different, just on SEQA and housing, they did give a better definition or more refined definition of what a major transit stop is. And that's usually the headways of every 15 to 30 minutes during peak hours. And then SB 44 and SB 450 provided actual exemptions through SEQA for the conversion of motel hotels into supportive and transitional housing facilities, and then funding applications for supportive housing projects under like no place like home. So funding, actually, that was a pretty banner year for funding. Normally, we get a lot of these codes and regulations and requirements, the sticks, but with not a lot of carrots. This time, we actually got some carrots, and we got... This time, we actually got some carrots, and we got the, some, some money to kind of go back and help make these happen. We did actually see with SB 2, the recorder fee requirements, we are starting to see, that was actually two years ago, last year was the first year those fees were collected. And we are now starting to see that funding come down to local jurisdictions. Placer County will be awarded $310,000, actually very shortly, out of those recorder fees. And that is ongoing funding that'll be years to come. But in addition to that, this year, they also included, as I mentioned, the 2.5 billion in the governor's AB 101 bill that will help with local planning efforts like updating our housing elements and getting our codes in line and, and that. So, we'll be able to be, to receive some funding to help us offset the cost of doing that as well.
So, any refunding that you're getting, they're telling you what you, what you're going to use that money for, right?
Yes, yeah. It's, it's primarily for planning, albeit, we are seeing they increased the amount that affordable housing projects can now get through the tax credit process and some additional project-based funding that comes down through HCD. I'll, I'll talk some more about that as well. But there's some other things, so enhanced infrastructure financing districts. That was kind of a tool that was, that kind of came about after the redevelopment, but it did still require full votes of the district areas. This round, AB 116, actually removed the requirement for the voter approval to issue the, the enhanced infrastructure financing district bonds. It should hopefully make that tool a little more easier to use. It does exempt, uh, community land trusts from, I'm sorry, exemptions from property owned by the community land trusts that are willing to use it for housing, property tax exemptions, and, let's see what, oh, affordable housing now, uh, community financing tax. So, that's, CFDs are a tool that we're, a lot of jurisdictions use, something that we're also considering as part of some of our new developments, like outhapping with Placer Vineyards and Riolo. It now allows for the exemption of affordable housing properties out of those CFD requirements.
So, I understand, is it possible, you know, Melrose obviously puts a great burden on developments that people find as a surprise later on when it shows up on their tax statement? Is it, there are any implications of this that people are going to find a surprise on their tax statements because of bond funding related to affordable housing? That they're going to have to pay for those bonds?
I don't, I don't see it going backwards. I do, probably going forward, so I don't know if it'd be so much of a surprise. They'll know going into the purchase of the home or, or into the rent.
So, it isn't more broadly for a region, it isn't broadly that it could show up on your tax?
Your property tax, no, not, these are specific to projects.
Okay.
Yeah. Additional funding from AB 101, 650 million for homeless housing assistance, and those funds are expected to be applied for by February 15th. We're actually, the good news is we're actually seeing this funding come out fast, too. Typically, in the past, when funding is, comes down from the government, it takes two, three, four years for even an application to be, come out and, and be able to, to utilize funding. We're actually starting to see, you know, these applications. HCD is moving pretty quickly, and, and so are some of the other departments that have access to these funds. 250 million for local government planning, that's as I mentioned, for planning support to help with the updates of housing elements, and then 500 million for the Infill Infrastructure Grant Program. So, as part of the $4 billion bond that the voters of the state actually passed, that will reinitiate the Infill Infrastructure Grant Program, an additional 500 million has been added to that through the AB 101 bill.
Shauna, on the, I'm sorry, on the homeless part, is that for vouchers or for actual structures or to help them get into housing, as assistance? So, is it actual buildings or?
I, I think it's going to be both, but I think the idea is, is that they would like to see it attached to a project.
Okay, so they haven't exactly said what they want?
No, we have not seen that one come out yet. And then just some additional other existing programs where there'd be some additional funding was, was provided. So, Cal Home Housing Trust, the tax credit got additional funding, and then of course, Self-Help Housing Funds for special need housing also received that 500 million. So, what does this mean for Placer? Is this kind of a short bullet list of the things that we're going to be looking at doing? So, additional requirements in the, the 2021 Housing Element Update, that actual, the contract will go to the board next week for approval, and we'll get started with our Housing Element Update. Arena is going to, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation numbers will go to SACOG also next week for approval. So, after next week, we should be able to hit the ground running and begin the updates to our housing element. We do need to prepare an accessory dwelling unit ordinance or an update to our ordinance. We'll also need to be adding junior accessory dwelling units to that ordinance or to a companion ordinance to address those changes in state law. Prepare the density bonus ordinance to incorporate the laws for the 100% affordable housing projects. As part of, as part of the Housing Code Update, I know Patrick Dobbs was here recently talking about the Housing Code Update that we are also working on. We did have some changes to the density bonus in there. We will now need to incorporate some of these changes into state law as part of that effort as well. Develop the SB 330 pre-application form. As I mentioned, we already have a pre-application process, so we're just going to need to, you know, bring ours up to the state requirements. Adopt objective zoning standards where applicable. So, this is for all residential types of development. As part of that Housing Code Update, we did include the preparation of objective design standards for mixed use and multifamily, but we may need to consider expanding that for all residential, for those objective standards. Review potential inconsistencies between zoning and general plan densities. General plan is kind of king in this. Zoning no longer really plays as much of a role under the new state laws. Most things need to default to that general plan density, so we'll be taking a look at those.
I have a question for you. When, when you look at the density bonus ordinance and in Placer County, do you anticipate that those, those carrots will change maybe the influence of, of the projects related to high-density projects?
I think in very select areas, yes. I don't, I don't see it happening broad. I think there's going to be kind of natural restrictions like water and sewer and slopes and wetlands and all those other things that come into play when we're dealing with those. But I, I do believe that there are probably, you know, parcels, you know, very specific locales in Placer where this will be, where it, it will work and it may be applied. And then lastly, review and apply for the various funding opportunities. Placer, a lot of times, doesn't score well. We tend to be a higher income jurisdiction, so where those applications are still going to, you know, want to be focused in on the more impacted communities, you know, we may not be afforded those. However, they did plug in to, I believe it was the, the governor's trailer bill provisions for what they call a pro-housing community, so that you can get bonus points on all these applications that are going in. So, Placer County will be applying, you know, to hopefully receive our pro-housing designation, which will then help us to, you know, get more funding, we hope, so. So, what's to come? So, many of these have kind of gone away. What we are still, this is, this will be the second year of a two-year ledge cycle. We are still anticipating SB 50 to come back. We understand Senator Atkins and the governor have both indicated their support for that, although I do suspect it'll be amended primarily because many of the items that were in it are, have already been addressed in some of the bills that passed now. That one was the one that really focused in around the transit-oriented design, kind of unlimited densities in and around those transit areas and those types of things. We also are expecting to hear more about the requirement for votes on affordable housing projects. Right now, it requires a vote of the jurisdiction for bonding of affordable housing projects. There is an effort underway that would require to go actually to the state, though, for a vote as well, once it's blessed by the legislature. So, maybe a quieter year to come, our hope, but, because we'll be busy taking care of this year coming forward, but not quiet.
Shauna, has the Board of Supervisors asked for this presentation because they need to know what's coming?
They have, yeah, yeah.
So, have you done it yet?
No, you're my first stop. Yes, yeah.
So, when are you, when are you giving that to them?
I, I think it's right after the first of the year, yeah. Yeah, it was when we'll be, be them. But we've met with them and provided them. And then I, I did pass out, just kind of, and we, we are starting to hand those out and get them to the board, just kind of, kind of a brief summary of some of the laws that are coming down that'll be addressed here at Placer County.
And it appears there's a lot of clarity that still needs to come around all of this stuff. So, that may actually delay you putting something official out as a new policy until you can get that cleared. So, and, and you said there's going to be some cleanup bills, so even if we adopt a policy, it may have to get amended later based on how they clean it up.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's a big reason why we are kind of delaying the secondary dwelling ordinance update to, you know, late January or early February, in hopes that we will have some of that cleanup. It may get delayed further if we don't see that cleanup happening, albeit, much of the cleanup that we are seeing were things that we're addressing, things like owner occupancy, and those are things Placer County's already taken a, a stance on, and we don't require owner occupancy. So, you know, where we can go ahead and move along with that ordinance, we will, but if we need to wait for the state, we will.
Shauna, could you just brief, we talked briefly before this presentation began, but the actions the county has taken already for ADUs, et cetera, are they having an impact in the county?
I believe they are. So, shortly after we adopted in 2017, the revisions then bringing us consistent with state law at that point in time, and the county saw an average of about 15 units per acre, I'm, I'm sorry, per year of secondary dwellings. The very next year, I think we went up to 37, 38, and the following year, we were about 45. This year, it looks like we're going to be back around the 40 mark again. That being said, I think a lot of people got wind of these laws that are coming forward, particularly, you know, not having to pay impact fees if you built 750 square feet or less. So, we anticipate they'll probably, you know, want to wait until after January 1st when those will go into effect. But we have seen an increase, for sure.
Is your presentation going to be available online?
I can make it available online, absolutely, yeah.
Would you please?
Yeah, yes.
There's a lot of information here, and I realize the laws have more, this is a good summary.
They, they do, yeah. There's, like I said, there's, there's still a lot back there.
Are they actually going to regulate this so it doesn't turn into Verbo or Airbnb's, you know, on some of these secondary dwellings? I mean, I guess they're just going to depend on the neighbors sort of turning the other neighbor in.
Well, to the, yeah, short-term rentals not being allowed, you know, to be, I'm sorry, secondary dwellings not being allowed to be short-term rentals. I think that's one we're going to definitely see. But again, Placer County in 2017 adopted the provisions that said one or the other can be a short-term rental, but not both at the same time. So, we've kind of covered that, you know, already under our ordinance, but we'll see. If they end up coming out with a shall, then we'll have to address ours, and then yeah, it'd be regulated through code enforcement.
Yeah, because I can see this being very tempting to people to, you say, I can get a pretty good source of income here from just short-term rentals on this, and that won't be a big motivator for them. And I just think it's really opening, all of these things are really opening a lot of issues that, as Sam said, unintended consequences that I think we're all going to be facing. It's frustrating.
Mr. Chair, to that end, if I may, follow Commissioner Nader, and I'm not going to bombard you, Shauna, I promise. But I am going to call in EJ here because the, when I, when I talk, or when you talk about the carrots and the stick, are there enough carrots in this that are going to be able to compensate the county for the, again, this is a mandate, for all of these services that are going to now be required? You know, it's not by accident that every single one of those authors of these bills, they like to use terms streamline and cleanup. They're everything but, and they're actually efforts by the state to intervene in the local governing process. So, an example is the Bay Area Rapid Transit District is BART in the Bay Area, and BART now has the fun responsibility of being able to deal with housing because the state said so. So, every single one of these bills is, are authors are by the majority party, and, you know, we should just be mindful of the impacts and the costs that will be borne by Placer County. And EJ, I'm not going to put you on the spot to give, to give an answer, but it's just something to think about because you might be the only one having to do all of this stuff, and, and the voluminous work project that's going to be before you is going to be mind-boggling, to say the least. And then, to, to, my commissioner colleague to my left's comment about places like Tahoe City is, is fortunately, in that state, in that situation, there are federal jurisdictional implications that will overrule any of these great ideas that come from Sacramento. And it should be of no surprise to anybody in this room or watching or, or at home or watching the website later, that Placer County is not a friend, is not considered to be a friend by Sacramento in the state legislature. It is one of the counties that the state really wants to get in and be, to be able to regulate everything and not just housing. So, that, that's the extent of my conversation and comments for now.
Thank you. I, I wanted to ask a question, but it, it seems like almost a bus stop, really getting to your point, too, a bus stop is almost a gateway to like a lot of freedoms. And I wonder if there wouldn't be, and, and it is getting into, you know, the transportation system is now very closely connected with housing, because if they put a bus stop or some connection, then they're then saying that all these housing privileges go along with that. So, do you anticipate that, you know, more bus stops or less would be something the county would need to-
Develop perfected bus stops.
Be prepared to address?
At this point, we're working real closely with our regional planning group, SACOG, on, on that very question for all six counties and 28 jurisdictions in this, in this region because there, there is now a, what used to be considered more of a natural, a forced link between transportation and housing going forward, and to, to meet our requirements as a region, we may need to look at those bus, you know, where our routes are, what we do. We need to look at where those routes are, which will drive where the housing goes.
Yeah. Let's say, let's say a transportation line goes away, how does that affect, how does that influence the current regulations of those that are already existing? I guess if a transportation line went away and now they're outside the zone, would, would they be influenced by that, a change in that?
Potentially. I think we're also all realizing that, you know, 20 years ago, transit buses and trains was kind of the thought process of, of where, you know, urbanization was going to happen around, in and around that. We've been Uberized, you know? I mean, we now have, you know, these car share programs and, and, you know, that changes the model for land use. And so, we know transportation's going to look different 10 years from now. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like. So, I think, you know, this is definitely going to be kind of feeling our way through different development patterns as we go forward.
Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you. This was excellent.
Good, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I know you're dealing with a moving target, so I appreciate you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Would like to thank everybody who came out and participated today and with that meeting adjourned.
Yep, see you next Thursday.
That's it.